Okay, welcome everybody. So we're going to begin Iowa City City Council's Budget Work Session for Saturday, January the 5th, 2019. Happy New Year to everyone. Some of us went hiking in Wisconsin, not to name any names in particular. It sounds like fun. Is this working properly? Yeah, okay. So Jeff, it's my understanding that you're going to give us a brief overview.
Brief is a relative term. Buckle up, we've got an hour, hour and a half budget overview. Before we get started, a couple of thank yous. Thanks to members of the public that came in today for Breakfast on a Budget. We appreciate you coming to join us this morning. I also want to thank the council in advance for what is going to be a long day. Those of you that have been through this know it is a full day of a lot of information being thrown at you. And then, of course, we'll have some follow-up work sessions throughout January and February to put this budget to rest and get it to the state for adoption. So I want to thank our staff. There are hundreds and hundreds of hours that go into developing the budget proposal that's in front of you, from the departments themselves and the staff and the department directors, to our Budget Committee, which does the lion's share of the work. That is Dennis Bockenstett, Ashley Monroe, Simon Andrew, and Jaclyn Fleagle. They themselves spent hundreds of hours preparing this, so a big thank you to them as well. I want to just let everybody know, this presentation is being recorded by our cable TV, so the first hour and a half overview from the city manager's office will be recorded. We are not doing the video recording for all the individual department presentations. But of course, like all work sessions, there'll be transcripts available should anybody want to go back and review the content there. So with that, we're going to go ahead and get started. I'm going to turn it over to Ashley to start the presentation.
Okay. Well, good morning. We have first, just a review of our budget schedule. So we started back in August of the past year. We actually kicked it off with an exercise called Chip In. We named it so because of some snacks that we were going to be providing, as well as the ability for the public to chip in to what they felt is most important and valued when it comes to the budget and what we're spending tax dollars on. So we gave the council some feedback about that session and started a work session on August 21st. We are starting now with our January 5th operating budget review today. We will, in a couple of weeks, talk about our capital improvement plan that is being proposed. We're hoping to get all budget information settled, all budget decisions made by February 12th. So that's dead set, drop dead date for getting things in the packet, so that we can set a public hearing on February 19th. Then we'll have the March 12th public hearing, and the state requires certification with a county auditor by March 15th. We have our budget documents. If you have, you don't need, you could read all 700 pages. However, we have a couple of areas to focus, including our transmittal letter. It's an annual statement from the manager's office, city manager, to provide a summary. We've got our economic trends from 42 to 45, fund structure and descriptions, financial and fiscal policies, our long-range plans, and a general fund summary. So here we have a image, a chart of our budget structure. So you'll see several funds. We've got our general fund. That's the primary fund that we, you know, fund things like our public safety, our recreation services, administration, finance, our library, the senior center. A lot of what you see and we'll talk about pertains quite a bit to the general fund. Our special revenue funds can be used only for specific functions. So we can't use revenues in those funds for anything but their intended purpose. Things like our CDBG and home programs, housing and development, road use, tax, employee benefits. We have our debt service fund, which pertains to management of the city's debt. Our enterprise funds run similar to a business in that revenues that are generated from service charges, like water, sewer, refuse, parking, they go directly back into the operating expenses. So we'll cover more of those in detail later in the presentation. We've got our capital projects fund, so as I said, we're discussing that on January 16th. And those assigned funds to larger infrastructure-type projects. Our internal service funds are the last ones I'll mention, and they cover, you know, what is essentially kind of charged back for internal uses. So our IT, equipment replacement, and our insurance funds. We've got a description of our population growth. This is a statement showing we went from 1990s, where we added about 2,500 people, the 2000s, where we're adding about 5,600 people, and in the last, you know, seven or eight years, we've added nearly 8,000 residents to Iowa City. So this makes us the fourth-largest population growth within the state of Iowa. So the top three are in the Des Moines area. We've got Ankeny, West Des Moines, and Des Moines as those top three communities. So all I want to say is that it's important to note that with growth comes the challenges to providing services at the same level. So expansions in geographic area, increases in our police and fire calls, the number of utility accounts, all add to us needing to keep up with our service needs and community I have a brief overview of our three budget goals. So we hope that throughout the presentation, you'll find that we've adequately and really significantly addressed our commitment to each of these budget goals. But the book says that we're going to provide resources to make significant progress in implementing city council's strategic plan priorities and adopted master plans. We are balancing expanding service needs, as I just talked about, and community priorities, while we have declining taxable value of our apartment buildings through tax reform. We are considering the overall effect of changes on our household budgets, including taxes, fees, and the needs of the school district and the county. And now I'll go into a little bit of detail about how we're addressing a lot of the council's strategic plans and initiatives. We've got our bike and parks master plan implementation. So we've noted that this budget is addressing, we are addressing, destination playgrounds and other enhancements to our parks, specifically Lower City Park and Willow Creek Park, so destination areas for the larger community. We're completing the Riverfront Crossings Park improvements, so we are a couple of phases into that project. And we've got just small punchless-type activities for a couple of the phases. We've completed the playground. The shelter is nearly complete, and we're looking forward still to the relocation of this Nelson sculpture and Circle Drive, the opening entry drive landscaping. We've got accessibility improvements also, I want to note. Specifically, this upcoming year is at Brooklyn and College Green Parks, but we've completed probably four to six of the accessibility improvements at parks earlier in this past year. We want to note the bike master plan implementation, so we're continuing to track our efforts here, and we include the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee in our updates. So last year, several of the projects were not completed, specifically those, you know, as you've observed, under construction on Clinton, Mormon Truck, Seven and Governor. And we're looking to finish those this year, along with bicycle facilities on Foster and Dodge. We've got construction of the Highway 1 Trail Extension to Mormon Truck coming up this year. We've got the construction of McCallister Boulevard from Gilbert to Sycamore, which will incorporate bicycle facility on that road. And then we've got a couple of bike boulevards on Greenwood and Myrtle, as well as Prentice. So a lot of projects underway and upcoming that'll really make some nice connections within our community. Next up, we have affordable housing. So highlighted here, we want to note that since fiscal year 2015, the city's contributed $7.6 million to affordable housing initiatives. NDS, or Neighborhood and Development Services, provided a memo recently that highlighted the cumulative unduplicated count of housing units assisted with our city funding sources. So a few stats from the memo include the fact that we've contributed to the construction of 397 affordable housing units. It doesn't include the public housing and workforce housing tax credits, so it's a significant number. Eighty-seven percent of subsidized units have aided our families. At 80% or below of the area median income, and 63 of the units we've assisted have been, sorry, 63% of the units assisted have been rentals. Well, the other 37% have been owner-occupied. The biggest thing, and one of the things that we'd really love to highlight, is that this fiscal year 2020 budget is the first one that has been able to embed discretionary funds, so non-one-time funds dedicated to affordable housing. So council direction is still needed on the use of one-time funds, so we've allocated $650,000 this year. And if council chooses to add anything to the affordable housing fund, it would be up to you. We also have a couple pending requests, one from HCDC and from the Housing Fellowship that we'll talk about a little bit later as well. Here we've got climate action. We've talked about that a lot this year. We've got, we've approved the plan in September of last year, 2018. So that was a major community effort to put that plan together. And so here we've highlighted the specific categories that you would be looking to as they pertain to the climate action plan. Before I start on just a summary of this, I want to note that climate action was just one specific line item in our past budgets. So now that the plan is in place, we've moved individual line items as they pertain to specific departments, the projects, the programs, equipment, studies, that sort of thing. So here we have, and we might talk about a little bit more of these individual bullet points in the rest of the presentation, but we've got funds dedicated to solar at the Public Works Facility and pending funding allocation for Terry Trueblood Recreation Area, as we discussed a couple of weeks ago at a work session. We've added in the budget an assistant facilities manager position. So this position would be kicking into high gear our energy efficiency projects. Our tracking is currently managed by our sustainability director, and they would not only do that, but also manage the facility projects that the city needs as we undertake HVAC and lighting kind of improvements. It's not noted in the transportation section, but we are continuing efforts to expand our alternative vehicles in our city fleet. So we're planning to add two vehicles in 2019, and then as other vehicle replacements come up in the future. There aren't pool cars planned for replacement in 2020, but we are working on that. We also, just in transportation, we're supporting the upcoming transit study. We have new bike parking, the new bike lanes, as I just described. And then we're actually going to plan to advertise our transit and mobility options. So just bringing to attention the opportunities people have to use alternative modes of transportation to cut down on vehicle usage, and also support our other city operations like transit. Waste, we have added landfill staff and refuse staff. We have one position in each of those divisions in Public Works. We're hoping that not only does that improve and create better efficiencies in our service, but also allow for recycling drop-off pickups at the drop-off site and create better route efficiencies. It also allows for better usage of our landfill site, having a second operator out there. We also are funding a methane study at the wastewater treatment plant. It's one of the biggest producers of carbon emissions in the city for our municipal operations, and so we wanted to dedicate funding to take a look at that. In fiscal year 19, we're doing a methane study at the landfill. We have, in adaptation, $125,000 for implementation of our natural areas plan. So we are managing, you know, the natural species at Hickory Hill, Terry Trueblood. We're also getting into Ryerson Woods and Sand Prairie. So we have an assistant park superintendent that came online in 2018, and they're focused on managing the new natural areas contracts and that maintenance, making sure that we're really digging into those areas. We've added a stormwater technician position, so that should assist with our flooding mitigation efforts, and that also pertains to our adaptation section of the climate plan. And finally, I want to note that in transportation, adaptation, and the lifestyle sections of the climate plan emphasize the importance of our communication. So we've budgeted for the promotion of city efforts to, you know, our city efforts as far as how we're implementing our climate action plan, but also about promoting community options to participate or modify their choices, expand on translation and communication efforts with populations that are harder to reach, limited English populations, for instance, especially as we want to communicate with them when it comes to emergencies and other climate-related outreach. So we're taking a really comprehensive look at how we're addressing this plan in the first year of its implementation, and we're excited about the projects being spread out throughout the departments. Social justice, we have $2.5 million in funding for the Behavioral Access Center partnership with Johnson County. We're continuing the $75,000 for the social justice and racial equity grant program. We have funding to eliminate fines for children's materials at the Iowa City Public Library. So this is a new item. It's a product of the racial equity toolkit initiative, so this was a recommendation that came from that. There's quite a few communities across the country that are implementing such a program or absorbing the fines for children's materials especially. And that cost is about $37,000 net to be able to do that. We are funding accessibility improvements, continuing to do that for our park sidewalks and public facilities. And then I'll talk a little bit about the wage increases for hourly temporary employees. So step one, as council directed, was to go to $1,150 an hour as of July 1st, 2019. So that funding is in this budget. We are increasing our temporary wages by about $260,000. To do that, about 63% of the increase in temporary wages is due to the increase in those wages. So we have added a couple of new temporary hours. We'll talk a little bit about that as we go through the day. But I wanted to give an update as far as that goes. Staffing typically sees, our ability to fund our personnel takes about 3% to 4% for regular staff time wages, and the temporary wages see about a 9% increase to get to that $1,150. Steps two and three, we're estimating, are the cost to go to $1325, about $400,000. Step three, to $15 an hour, as you know, was discussed, would be about $350,000. We just want to note that we're still going through staff analysis of the potential compensation issue, or compression issues, I should say, for those upcoming years. So years two and three are an estimate that could change as we complete our analysis of the compensation plans and pay structures. But it's pretty close to that $1 million estimate that we gave you when this topic first came up. We are making significant investments in roads. So one thing that came from the Chip In study, I think one of the top comments we got was, "Let's improve our roads." So we wanted to know what we're doing to address that. We're continuing to increase our funds for pavement rehabilitation, so the patching, the resurfacing. And we are also providing for new equipment to help the Streets Division do that work more efficiently and effectively for in-house pavement management. And finally, you know, we've pushed road use tax about as far as we can. We may need to supplement the road use tax and resurfacing budget more with property taxes unless road use increases. So, you know, vehicle efficiency, the drop in fuel prices have all contributed to a slight dip in our receipts of road use tax this year. We'll talk about that a little bit more as well. Well, we're doing major projects, though, for road improvements as well. And the CIP, you'll hear a little bit more about the projects in a couple of weeks, but wanted to know upcoming projects. We've got our McCallister Boulevard extension. 2020, we've got the reconstruction of American Legion Road. We have, in 2021, proposed Rochester Avenue reconstruction and Benton Street reconstruction. 2022, Court Street reconstruction and Dubuque Street reconstruction. And then 2023, the fifth year in our plan, we've got Dodge Street reconstruction and then connection in Riverfront Crossings at Kirkwood and Capitol. We have concentrated as well on additional core support. So we're talking about general, regular, everyday operations that are integral to the operations of our community. As I noted, we have added two positions in refuse and landfill, one in stormwater. We have one and a half positions in facilities, so that's that assistant facilities manager and a half-time custodian position to help support our recreation and municipal building operations. We're doing utility upgrades for water at First Avenue, Dill, Spruce, some of the upcoming projects. For sewer lines, projects at Nevada and Scott Trunk Sewer. Stormwater, focus on lower Muscatine. Public safety, we have the fire station land purchase in this budget. We have a training tower and public safety storage, downtown cameras, and some new technology. Last, or for me generally, we have our tax rate in surplus dollars. So it's a discussion about the budget meeting strategic plan initiatives. We're decreasing the tax rate for the eighth straight year with modest increases in water and stormwater rates. We have a general operation reserve funds are strong. They're slightly above the upper end of our 25% to 35% of revenues and transfers in policy target. So the surplus that we're looking at is a combination of loan repayments to the general fund, backfill not getting pulled from us, high-value construction producing one-time development revenues. Our recent surplus funds have been used to create and fund our emergency reserve. We're looking to add $450,000, or recommending to add $450,000 to return it to $5 million. We purchased a couple of flood properties last year. Want to further reduce and retire debt and bolster CIP program through Public Works Facility, Training Tower, the Access Center, affordable housing. And then finally, there's just another piece the council can determine what to do with, you know, any unfunded council initiatives. And we also are thinking about a new facility reserve fund. So thinking years forward in the future, how we would replace our municipal facilities in critical need. Our outstanding council initiatives, Jeff will go into more detail, but this is just a list of things that council has provided direction on already, the South District, homeownership, and Terry Trueblood Solar, but also thinking about affordable housing contributions, Lytech requests, and the St. St. Gilmore relocation.
Okay. Ashley gets to talk about all the great things we're doing, and I get to be the wet blanket that talks about all the future concerns that maybe prevent us from doing more than what we want to do. You know, uncertainty is the enemy of budgeting, and unfortunately, we are budgeting and have been for the last few years in uncertain times. That uncertainty really stems from the property tax reform that was passed in 2013 but is not completed, not fully implemented, I should say, until 2024. And that property tax reform is at the top of the list here in terms of some of those concerns that we have when we start to look forward a little bit. The first two items, as you read from top on the left to right, those commercial backfill and multi-residential taxability, those are the property tax reform pieces. And I'm going to touch on each of these in subsequent slides. The next two, there's the residential rollback, and then as you move to the bottom left, the volatile expense items. Those are things that we deal with every year, not associated with property tax reform, but things that make budget tricky for us every year. And then the last two items deal with just the economic times that we're in. We are transitioning from a period of robust growth, and I will show you that we are now returning back to more average or typical times for Iowa City. So some of those one-time revenues that we've been getting, that Ashley mentioned, we don't expect to continue to get because our growth is starting to slow down, and then we have some economic uncertainty in some of our key industries here. So let's take these one at a time. We've got the multifamily residential piece of the property tax reform. So prior to property tax reform, multifamily, what's called multi-residential, you can think of them as apartment buildings, they were taxed at 100% of their value. If the building was worth $1 million, their taxes were based on that $1 million value. Well, one thing that the property tax reform legislation did is it said those properties should not be taxed as commercial anymore, they should be taxed at residential rates, and we're going to phase into that. So every year, as they phase that in, we're losing some of our taxable value. And right now, as we look at fiscal year 20, the multi-residential property is going to be taxed at 75% of its value. So it's already down from 100% to 75. That's $125 million worth of taxable value that is just off our books. What's that mean? It's about $2 million in actual money that would be coming to the city had that property tax reform bill not been passed. We would have an extra $2 million, and there is no backfill for this piece. When we talk about the backfill, that is separate. This is just money that we don't get. It's property owners, they don't pay that, they don't pay that taxes. So the cumulative impact of that, we estimate to be $15 million. So we're at $2 million for this fiscal year we're looking at, but over that implementation period, the loss to the city is $15 million. That is a significant challenge for us. And when we talk about uncertainty in budgeting, we have to continue to think about every year, losing another few hundred thousand dollars out of our tax receipts because this will continue to be funded. I'm going to skip ahead to the rollback because I want to make the point... I'm gonna skip ahead to the rollback because I want to make the point, when I talk about multifamily properties being, coming down to the residential rate, I want to make sure you know what that residential rate is. So residential rates are, right now, are taxed at 57. So you're, think of your single-family home. If you own a single-family home, you pay taxes on 50% of that home's value. So if you have a $100,000 home, the taxes are based on a value of $57,000. So that's what those, that's where those apartments are going. They used to be taxed at 100%, and sooner or later, well, in 2024, these two, those two numbers are gonna match. And we want to show you what the volatility of this rollback figure is. This is a figure that's determined by the state. We don't set this, the state sets it, and we deal with it, we adjust with it. But you can see it's been as low as 44% over, you know, just 10 years ago. And we've been lucky that that number's been creeping back up. But the point is, is that not only can single-family homes go down that low, but we could see our apartment values go down that low. So that's a significant drop there. A change in 1%, as noted on the slide, is about $700,000. So fortunately for us, it went up this year, which means a higher percentage of your single-family home is taxed, and that's brought in, it's about $900,000 in new revenue for the city. So that's certainly helped us this year. But we don't expect it to continue to rise. We probably think it'll go down and stabilize a little bit in the mid-50s there. So that'll be a continuing challenge for us. Now here's the backfill. So you have the, this is the second component of the property tax reform. So we have the multifamily piece, which we don't get any backfill from. The commercial piece is where we get backfill. So like multifamily properties, the state wanted to reduce the property tax burden on commercial properties. And they said, you no longer need to be taxed at 100% of your value, we should tax you at 90% of your value. So again, if you owned a property, a commercial property that was worth $1 million, you used to pay taxes based on that $1 million. Now you're only paying taxes based on $900,000. And that's where the state said, don't worry, cities, we'll make you whole with these backfill payments. And to date, they have. But as you have heard from us over and over, and if you've read through various publications, the future of backfill remains very uncertain. It came down to the last day of the session last year where negotiations fell apart on a phase-out bill that would have started to reduce backfill payments to cities. We know it's gonna come up again this session, and cities are joining together to work hard to preserve those dollars, but it's probably, as I've said before, a matter of time before other priorities in the state budget start to grab these funds. 1.5 million means a lot to us, especially when you combine it with the $2 million that we've lost for multi-residential properties. You can see some budget equivalents that we have on the screen there. Essentially, 1.5 million, I think the easiest equivalent is, you know, that funds a fire station. That funds the staffing of a fire station, when you think of 12, 13 firefighters and all the equipment and services that need to go into that type of operations. It's a significant part of our budget. Okay, I alluded to this. Are we gonna be able to sustain the growth that we've had? And the answer is no, it's gonna come back down to more typical levels. So what we're looking at on the screen here is the construction value of our building permits for each of the calendar years from 2008 to 2018. And what you'll see is after 2008, coming out of the recession, we had really an average of about $100 million. You know, you see 2009 through 2011 was actually under $100 million worth of construction value on our permits. And then we really started to see that uptick in 2012. 2012, 2013 through 2015, that average jumped up to $161 million. And then, of course, we had that 2016 year, which we knew was an outlier, but we jumped all the way up, close to $400 million that year. And then we're gonna start to see this kind of regress back down to that average. 2018, a few things I want to point out there, that's a strong number in 2018, but it's a little misleading. We're almost at 200,000, or I'm sorry, the 200 mark there. But we had a higher-than-usual non-taxable construction value. So these numbers include school buildings, city buildings, that at the end don't pay taxes. So while they, while they look good and we get some building permit revenue from them, at the end of the day, they're not expanding the tax base. And you can see in 2018, on the bottom note there, that we had just over $50 million in non-taxable construction value. We average about 25, so we really doubled our average in non-taxable there. So that would bring the, kind of the yellow bar down if we were to strip out the non-taxable value there. A couple of things, as I looked at the year-end, building permits themselves, you can really start to see a slowdown. We had a 109 single-family house permits issued. That was our lowest number since 2011. On multifamily dwelling units that were permitted in 2018, we had 163 new multifamily dwelling units. That's our lowest since 2012. So I don't think that's unexpected. I mean, we've all been seeing the, kind of the explosion of growth these last few years. And we've talked a lot about, you know, just the market absorbing that. And whether you're talking to bankers or developers, you're starting to hear more concern that, how much more can the market bear? And I think that there's a, there's naturally going to be a decline. Now, you know, what I hope is that we can keep that, you know, keep that number back in that 2012 to 2015 range when we normalize and we don't fall back down to those 2009 to 2011 numbers. Because, you know, certainly as we, as we look at the last four years of property tax reform, we still need that good growth to get through those last few years. I mentioned other variable costs as well, and just a couple of examples we thought would help illustrate this point. We're all enjoying the low fuel prices right now. As we budget, we have to be cognizant that those fuel prices won't last forever. You know, it wasn't too long ago that our fuel budget was a million more than it is today. And you can see on the screen there, five years ago, we were at a much higher level for fuel. So, you know, uncertainty in the world can drive fuel prices up in a heartbeat, and our budget has to be able to adopt to those costs. So, you know, million-dollar swings in fuel budgets is not unheard of, and we have to be able to react and absorb those costs if they come our way. And then healthcare, I think everybody's familiar with the volatility of healthcare. Just to illustrate that point, you know, we've seen an 18% increase in our healthcare costs in the last five years, and frankly, that's probably pretty good. You could talk to a lot of other organizations and see much higher percentage increases. We've done a nice job controlling those costs, but it's still a very volatile line. And then the last piece, I don't have a slide for, is just the economic uncertainty that I noted. Obviously, we're seeing the exit of Procter &amp; Gamble, a huge economic engine in our community, at least the one sector of their business. We have the uncertainty around higher education right now and how the university's gonna be able to grow and prosper. All those things kind of cloud what the future may hold for us a little bit. So to summarize, we're, we've done a really good job. We've been very, very fortunate over the first few years of this property tax reform that we've essentially been able to grow out of it. And our tax base has been able to expand, and all those losses that I talked about, we've been able to overcome those. But we still have four more years of the property tax reform to go before we, before we really get to that new normal, and we have these pressures there. So we can't, we can't kind of go on cruise control. We have to be very mindful of those. And as I said, our growth's gonna return to more normal levels. The residential rollback is still able to swing and cause us some stress. And then the multi-residential properties, we know what's gonna happen there, and it's not pretty, but we, you know, we have to deal with it. The backfill's the other piece of that. So this is, this slide repeats a lot of what we've just talked about, but it summarizes the challenge that we have. And I can tell you, while we're proud of, you know, the budget that's before you, we've been able to expand some positions really for the first time in a while. We need more, we'd like to do more, but I think we'd like to, I'd also like to get through a few more years of the property tax reforms that we know that we can sustain those commitments to our departments, should we make those. Okay, so we're gonna actually get into the budget itself now, it's kind of a big-picture overview. We're gonna give you a little bit of detail on revenues, and then Simon's gonna talk to you about expenditures and debt service, and then we'll wrap up with some analysis here. This is just a picture of our all revenues. So if you think back to the slide that Ashley, one of the first ones, and she went through all the different types of funds that we have, enterprise funds and general fund, these are all those funds combined. And so we say it's all funds revenue, and you can see the increases and decreases in various revenue sources. A couple of things to point out here, you see a very modest increase in our property tax, 1.9% there. The 39% jump in the use of money in property is primarily investment income. As we experience better interest rate environment, we're making a little bit more money on our investments. The intergovernmental funds are down 15%. That's more a function of grants and the timing of receipts of grants, so that's certainly not concerning to us. And then the other financial sources, dropping nearly 30%. That's just reflective of a decrease in our debt sales and public land sales. So again, not concerning there. Overall decrease in revenue, but you have to kind of dig into it more, and we feel pretty good about this mix. We'll show it a little differently, graphically for you. A couple of things to point out here, charges for service, that's mostly utility payments, making up that 24%. But if you take our charges for services, our intergovernmental funds, so those state and federal, for the most part, funds that we get in property taxes, it's about 80% of our revenue come from those three sources. We're not a very diversified community in terms of, in terms of our revenue sources. Most cities in Iowa aren't because of restraints and how we can raise revenue, but property taxes is still the largest. Want to break that down to just the general fund? So I was talking to begin about all those funds combined, and we focused a lot on the general fund with you today because that's where the most discretion exists, and that's typically where the council wants to spend most of our time. So if you look at your general fund revenue source, you see we're very heavily dependent on property taxes at 67%. And then you can see some notes on the screen about some of the other funding sources that we have. To the bottom left is other city taxes at 5%. That's our hotel motel and utility franchise taxes. You know, there's a lot of, I think, belief in the community that hotel motel taxes and utility taxes bring in a lot more money than they do. Yes, they bring in a substantial amount, but it's a very small piece of the overall puzzle. Again, less than, or 5% with those two, and our utility excise, which isn't mentioned there, combined. We'll talk property tax rates. We've got a few slides on that, so you can understand what the trend is there and what we're continuing to do, or propose to continue to do. This shows our property tax rate with the yellow line, and it shows the steady decrease in that from fiscal year 12, when it reached its peak at $17.84 to what we're proposing at $15.83. Why have we been able to do that? Well, that's the green bars there. Our tax base has grown significantly, and that, along with our debt management strategies, has really allowed us to push down our tax rate quite a bit. One thing I want to mention here is the, on the table below, you have a value percentage change figure. That's the percentage change in our tax base year after year from 11 to 20. And the way the assessments in the community work is that in even years, it's an assessment year. So that's when the city assessor goes out and determines the value of properties, and will determine whether the value of your property has increased or not. In those odd years, oh, I'm sorry, I got that backwards. Even year is a non-assessment year, and odd is an assessment year. So when we look at 2020, and that's a non-assessment year, we grew at 4.74%. And if you go back and look at all the other even years, we don't come close to 4.74%. So what's that, what that is telling you is, because properties aren't being reassessed, that's all new growth. And so all this development that we've had is starting to come online, and we're pushing that property tax base up quite a bit. That's really, really helped us as we prepare for the fiscal year 20 budget. As you look at those odd years, you tend to get bigger bumps in your tax value in the odd years because the assessor, again, is evaluating what sales have been across the community, and if your property value has increased, that's factoring into that as well. So really, for fiscal year 2021, we expect some really strong numbers because we've got more new development coming online, plus we expect the assessment. So as we look ahead to fiscal year 21, we're pretty bullish on what the, on what the tax base is gonna do there. Beyond that, a little less certain. Hopefully, hopefully that makes sense, if you see that pattern from odd years to even years. Just know that this fiscal year 20 bump is significant and really a credit to some of the past economic development efforts that we've had to expand the tax base.
Jeff, could I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Because I think when people look at this, and we've got numbers in here for fiscal 20, and we're not even into fiscal year 20 yet, can you, or Simon or Jaclyn, when was that reassessment actually done in terms of that we're making? Because I know we pay taxes like 12 or 18 months behind when the assessment is actually done.
Yeah, the fiscal year 20 budget is the January 1st, 2019 assessment, correct?
Yeah, it'd be, or 2018, January 1st of 2018 would actually be the fiscal year 20 budget.
Okay. So just, because when people look at this, and they, we're not even in fiscal year 20 yet, and their question might be, how are we even coming up with these numbers? The assessment was actually done back in 18?
When you look at those building permit numbers, there's a delay.
Right.
When the construction, then the assessment, and it's actually the fiscal year following that.
Following that. Thank you.
We always like to talk about the overlapping tax rate because while us up here at the table here, we have control and we focus on our tax rate. The reality is, when tax bills go out and our public gets them, it's not just our tax rate that they're paying, they're paying the school rate, and they're paying the county rate. So I always like to be mindful of what the rates and other entity, other governmental entities are doing, and if we can help offset any rate increases that they're doing, that certainly helps our public. And you can see the mix of the tax bill. What I like to say here is the pie chart there, if you're paying a dollar in property taxes, 41 cents comes to the city, 38 cents goes to the school district, 18 cents goes to the county, and a little bit to Kirkwood and the state. If you go to the next slide here, this just shows the mix between those entities, and that black line shows the percentage of Iowa City's take on that overall tax bill. So you can see that we, as we've dropped our tax rate, we've gone from almost 44% of that tax bill, getting closer down to, and this is an FY18 number, as the previous slide showed, we're getting close to 41% of that, of that tax bill. Some of the decreases that we've had are helping to offset the increases that the community supported at the, with the school district. So we know that the school district, and we supported that bond issue as a city, that bond issue is pushing tax rates up for the school. And fortunately, we're in a position where we can pull back our tax rate a little bit because of some of the debt management and the tax base growth that we've had, so that the taxpayer, when they get that bill, they're not bearing the full brunt of that, that school district tax rate increase. So something that we continue to be mindful of as we, as we plan our rates.
Jeff, of course, this is very good to hear because one of the things we said during the public debate about the proposed school district referendum was that we would be able to contribute to lower property, well, better property tax levies because of what we were doing.
Right. I always like to give you a glimpse of where our property tax rate sits as we compare to other communities. We compare ourselves to the 10 largest communities in Iowa, as well as our neighbors in North Liberty and Coroville. And what it was shown here is, the first column is the current year rate, the $16.18, that's our fiscal year 19 rate. Obviously, with this budget, we're proposing to drop that to 1583. But we also show the fiscal year 12 rate, because that's where we peaked. That's where our rate was the highest, and we were at 17. That's where our rate was the highest and we were at $17.84. That would be at the top of the charts, right behind Waterloo and a penny behind Council Bluff. So you can see the progress that we've made over the eight years in getting a more competitive tax rate, getting back to the middle of the pack where I think we'll, I think we'll be able to settle in in the mid $15 range there. And that's probably what's realistic for our community, given that we don't have some of the revenue sources that some of these other cities have. You know, and as folks look at the bottom of that list, we're never going to get to Coroville or North Liberty's rate because we offer a different set of services than they do. And so you can't look at these rates in kind of isolation. You have to consider why rates might be higher too. And that's also because, you know, we don't have gambling revenue that some of these cities do. We don't have sales tax revenue that some of these cities do. We offer full-time fire, professional fire as opposed to volunteer fire services and all those things impact the rate. But again, really proud of the way that we've been able to bring that rate back in line with kind of the middle of the pack there. I want to talk about some of the major revenue sources. Hotel motel tax. Many of you were at the Convention and Visitors Bureau annual meeting recently where Josh talked about the supply in hotel rooms. Over the last 10 years, we've increased the number of hotel rooms in Iowa City by 90%, 91% I think is the exact number. That doesn't always translate to increased revenue. And what we're showing you here is actually in 18, we took a step backwards in hotel motel tax revenue. That was primarily attributable to the temporary closure of the Sheridan as it transitioned from the Sheridan to the graduate. So in fiscal year 19, the current year that we're in, we do expect to get back up to that fiscal year 17 level of 1.1, 1.2 million, somewhere in there. But beyond that, we're really not sure if we'll grow from that 1.2 or if we'll come back down a little bit because all the new supply that Josh talked about at his meeting, that's leading to rate decreases. You know, there's more competition in hotels, so they're dropping their rates and that's going to ultimately lower the amount of taxes that come into the city. Utility franchise tax, we talk about, there's some volatility with this type of revenue because it is fairly weather dependent. This is a tax on your electric and gas bills. So if it's a very cold winter and you're running the, and you're running your heat quite a bit, our revenue's going to go up. If it's a very hot summer and you're running your air conditioner, our revenue's going to come up. If you're having a 50-day degree in January like we're going to have today, that's not very good for our tax revenue. So that's why you see some volatility there. But generally speaking, we're in that $900,000 range. I always like to point out, this is a, this is a revenue source that the council can increase. We're at 1% and state law allows you to go up to 5%. And we've listed the other cities and where they stand now, again, kind of in the middle of the pack. We're not suggesting a rate increase. We used the 1% to help open station four, fire station four. And this type of revenue source is good for those kind of large steps that you may need to make in operation. Open a fire station, increase your minimum staffing levels in a police department, those types of things where you may need to hire 10 employees or so. You may need a revenue source like this to accomplish that. Cable TV franchise, this is one we're just slowly watching drift away from us as people cut the cord and not, don't use cable. You can see the steady decline in the last few years. The other thing that will bring this down, as you're all familiar with, the media com has been able to move from a local franchise to a state franchise and that's going to reduce our revenue another 10%. So this current fiscal year, we'll expect to come in around 600,000. And every year after that, I think we're just going to continue to see this funding source, which supports our general fund, continue to decrease. And road use tax, Ashley alluded to this when she talked about all the increased investment in our roads. The challenge that we're seeing now is our road use tax receipts appear to have peaked or plateaued. 2018 was the first year we saw a decrease in our road use tax in quite some time. So we're going to have to, we're going to have to kind of live with the current level of road use tax funding. And unfortunately, I don't think the amount of resurfacing that we can do with this, with these funds is enough to keep up. And we're proud of the increase that we've done, but we're going to need another revenue source if we want to make real progress on our roads. And when we get into the capital budget, you'll see that we're going to rely on property taxes a lot more. We've got several of those projects that Ashley mentioned that are coming up in out years that are major property tax users. But we also may need to consider some other sources. And that will take me to our local option sales tax slide because local option, oh, I forgot, we had a road use projection here. This is just a long-term projection slide here that shows that we do expect, the blue line is our revenue line. And as you can look out a few years, we do expect we'll get a bump in road use taxes from the census. But you can see that our expense trajectory that we're on is not sustainable and we're going to have to pull that expense line back down or keep it flat in future years in order to match that revenue. So now we'll talk about the local option sales tax. Just want to note this because we are one of the few cities, especially larger cities, that do not have this funding source. There's been several attempts and we actually had it post-flood for four years. But as you look at this, a number of the cities that have it use it for street repair. And it's something that typically the public can support. As you've heard in your listening sessions, as we've seen in our community surveys, as we heard in the chip-in event, most people recognize the need to invest in our roads. The money that is generated from a local option sales tax is significant. We were getting close to $9 million a year for flood recovery for those four years and you can see what other comparable cities are bringing in with their local option sales tax. Des Moines is going to have another vote on a local option sales tax this spring. Based on their last vote, I think they'll, pretty good chance that they'll get that and then we'll be the only large city that does not have this. So it's something that the council can consider should you want to invest more in roads or frankly, any other. I mean, there's no, there's no limitation on roads. You can see the different uses that cities have identified. What we're going to do in this next, in this next year is we're going to do a road condition analysis study for you. Basically, look at the condition of roads and then study the funding needed to bring those up to different levels, present that to you, and then we'll be able to talk more precisely about the funding that's needed to get you to a certain condition level of roads and hopefully give you a more complete set of information to make any decisions, whether you want to stay status quo and kind of limp along as we've been able to or if you want to look at alternative revenue sources. Okay, over to Simon.
All right, flip over to the expenditure side now. We'll start with a slide that shows you all of our expenditures. This includes all of our funds. So this is general fund, utility funds. The major takeaway from this slide is to note how heavily our resources are devoted to utilities and infrastructure. So you see the two bars on the far right of that slide are capital projects and our business-type funds or our enterprise funds. So you see that the lion's share of the dollars that the city spend goes to road construction, water mains, sewers, things like that, that are frequently critical needs that we don't have as much discretion over as we may in the general fund. But flipping over to the general fund, you'll note how heavily, general fund expenditures are weighted toward personnel. So the main takeaway from this slide is to note that, you know, when we try and control expenditures in the general fund, we're really talking about people, that there isn't a whole lot of leeway in terms of services and supplies that we can dial back on. So when we talk about a 3% to 4% increase generally necessary year-to-year to track with the increased costs in doing business, that's largely associated with personnel Still on general fund expenditures here, just noting percent change year-to-year from the FY '19 revised budget to the proposed budget that you have in front of you. The two main categories that have changed are capital outlay and other financial uses. Capital outlay, the change there is largely associated with some flood properties that we bought in FY '19 that we don't expect to occur again in FY '20. There were also some university charges in there that we don't expect to continue at the same level in FY '20. So the fiscal year 20 budget has one house for the university program budgeted. There were three budgeted in FY '19 plus some carryover from previous fiscal years as well. So that's the drop of 60% in the capital outlay budget. Other financial uses, this is the money that we repay loans with. And so the difference there is all university. So that was paying back the loans that we took out to purchase those homes. Jeff noted volatile expenditures in the slide that he noticed, noted long-term trends in trying to plan financially for those expenses that we can't control. He noted a million-dollar swing is not unreasonable in fuel costs. Pension costs can see that same type of swing. Between this slide, which is public safety pension contributions and ipers, between the first year of those slides to today, that's about $1 million of those as well. We just include this to note that these are major expenses that are frequently dictated by either the state or financial conditions that we can't control. So we have to make sure that we have the financial capacity to react to these changes and not have to make any dramatic staffing or service level changes to react to increased expenditures. Especially in the climate action slides that Ashley went over, we noted some of these personnel changes. So we are excited with this budget, that we are recommending increasing staffing more than we have in any recent year. And largely, these staffing increases are associated with the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. So you'll see a one and a half FTE increase in government buildings. One of those positions is an assistant facility manager position, which is intended to implement energy efficiency and other sustainability projects within our facilities. And as you just saw with the Climate Action Plan, a lot of what we can do as a city to reduce the community's carbon emissions has to do with several of our facilities that are very big energy users. In refuse, you see a one position increase and this will help with a recycling collection. You'll see in the CIP plan that we go over in a couple of weeks that we are recommending adding a, another recycling drop site. And so this position will in part help do collection at that additional site. The landfill, we are also recommending an increase of one position that Ashley noted will help with compaction rates at the landfill and making sure that we have two people down in the cell at all times that can really maximize the use of space in those cells, which of course are very expensive and very, they're not a good land use. You know, the better we can efficiently use that space, the better. An increase of one FTE is also recommended in the stormwater fund. And this would be for a stormwater technician position that would design and implement management solutions throughout the community. Also increase our field inspections and making sure that stormwater facilities that have been constructed are operating as they should be. And the last note you'll see on here is a decrease of 1.75 in the parking fund. These are positions that have been vacant for some time, so this isn't a decrease in service level. This would just be basically a cleanup for positions that we haven't filled for some time. So that's it on the expenditure side for the high level before we get into all the department level expenditures later in the day. So I'll flip over to the debt service fund.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Are you planning to fill the parking at any point?
No, this would eliminate them from the budget.
Okay, so it's gone totally.
Right, right. Generally, those positions that have decreased in the parking fund have to do with automating facilities. So we used to have cashiers at each of those exits and now so many of them are credit card only that we don't need staffing at those positions.
Awesome.
So I wouldn't see it, you wouldn't see a decrease in services in the parking fund associated with that.
Thanks.
Moving over to debt service. So we have the three policies in our debt service fund that really guide how the, how the debt service fund impacts the levy rate. The first one's less of a policy than a state requirement that a city cannot have outstanding debt greater than 5% of the assessed value of, the total assessed value of property in the city. We're well below this debt limit threshold, but it's important to keep in mind that this is what the state limits us at. It's by no means a target or a goal. What we really target is that, and this is, comes from what Moody's recommends for AAA cities, is that the outstanding debt is not more than 0.75% of assessed value. Right now, we're at about 1.1%, which is still very good in comparison to other cities, but is not quite at our target. But we've been moving in that direction with our, with our prudent borrowing practices over the last few years. That percentage has been falling quite a bit. And also, our assessed value has gone up quite a bit too. So those numbers moving, the lower outstanding debt and higher assessed value puts us in that position where Moody's views our financial picture favorably. And the last one, again, we're well below our target here, is that the debt service levy shall not exceed 30% of the total city levy. Right now, we're sitting at about 19%, so well below that goal too. Moody's AAA bond rating, so we include these slides every year too and always like to point out that this is not just a pat on the back, not just an accolade, but this really translates to dollars that we're able to provide for services in the community or grants for organizations within the community. AAA bond rating is pretty unusual for a city of our economic outlook. Our median income is below what you would expect to see in a AAA bond-rated community. Generally, they tend to be suburban sort of bedroom communities with high property values and, you know, more often a lack of diversity, economic diversity at the very least. So we're very proud that our financial management has put us in a position where we can maintain this AAA bond rating. As you can see, these cities rated nationally, we're in the top 9% there. And within the state, we are within the top 5%, one of only three cities in the state. So again, very proud of that and translates to more flexibility for you all to devote resources to the services that you would like.
Okay, homestretch. I'm going to talk a little bit of analysis and tee up some, maybe some future conversation for you. First, we haven't spent a whole lot of time talking about enterprise fund balances and I just want to let you know what we're looking at with our, our business-type funds. This, what you're looking at here, this table, you have each of our enterprise or our major enterprise funds. Then the first column is revenues and transfers in, expenditures and transfers out, our fund balance. And then within that fund balance, sometimes we have restricted funds and those are set aside for a specific purpose. And then we have unassigned, which is more to support operations, cash flow needs or whatever the case may be. So I want to call attention to three that I think you'll be interested in. The first one, Simon, if you can click once more, is transit. Obviously, we're getting ready to kick off a transit study. We're in the consultant selection process and we know that there's going to be some calls for service level increases with transit. And this budget doesn't reflect funding for those and I want to explain why and then let you know how we're preparing for those service level expansions. One is the study's not going to, you know, we're going to be sitting here this time next year before that, that study's complete. So we didn't really have any defined service level expansions to budget for. So we will be able to budget for those and implement them as soon as the study's complete and council, you make your, you give your direction to staff. But what you should know is that we are running an operational surplus in our transit. You look at the revenues coming in there versus the expenditures and transfers out, we are intentionally and have been for some time running a surplus in transit, trying to build up those reserves. And you can see our estimated fund balance is almost at $7 million. That's a, that's a significant fund balance for transit. The main reason we're increasing those reserves is so that we have enough to provide for a federal match when, you know, as we, as we look to relocate that facility. Some of you have toured that. Some of you have toured that facility, you know it's well beyond the time that we need to replace that. We've identified a location for it on the Public Works campus, but we are in search of federal grants, which sometimes become available for these types of facilities. However, in order to get those federal grants, you typically have to have a 20% match at minimum. And the way that things are moving now at the federal level, the larger local match that you have, the more competitive that you're going to be. So, when you see that restricted column there and it says 4 million, that is largely what we've restricted so that we can apply for federal grants and say that we have the required match and make our application more competitive for a new transit facility. We are, so however, that, you know, that surplus that we're operating can also be used for operational enhancements. And when we define, when the community and the council defines what those service level enhancements are that you want to pursue, we'll immediately have some of that operational surplus that we can work with to move forward on those. And at the same time, staff is having conversations internally about other revenue sources that could help us achieve those transit level, transit service level expansions. So, just know that while you're not seeing anything specific in transit this year, that's probably going to be the big focus of next year's budget. But we've also are preparing financially with an expectation that there's going to be a call for increased expenditures in transit, and I think we're going to be poised to be able to meet those demands. I want to call attention to refuse. You see that we've got some razor-thin margins in our refuse. This is our curbside trash pickup. We're actually budgeting a little bit more in expenditures than revenues right now, and some of that's all the cart rollout that we're doing. But this is one where we're not recommending a fee increase, but we're just watching closely. And a fee increase will probably be needed a few years down the road, but it's pretty thin margins right now in our refuse enterprise fund. And the last one I want to mention is stormwater. We are recommending a 50 cents per month increase in our stormwater fee. One thing I want to point out is just how small this fund is compared to our other utility accounts. And yet, at the same time, we know that stormwater management is one of the bigger challenges our community has. I mean, that's come up in climate, excuse me, Climate Adaptation Plan. And even if you haven't read the plan and you know the flood history of our community and you experienced the torrential downpours that we did this past year, stormwater management is a big challenge, and we don't have a whole lot of dedicated resources going to that. We are asking for a 50 cent increase, but even with that increase, it's not a huge thing, which means stormwater needs are largely addressed by other revenue sources, whether that's general fund or another funding source. That's where we're having to rely on to make those improvements. The fee changes, we are not recommending fee changes in sewer, landfill, refuse, parking, or transit. We are recommending water and stormwater rate increases. We're recommending a two-year rate increase in water, 5% this year and 5% next year. Frankly, we didn't think we would be at this point. We thought we had adjusted them appropriately in the past few years, but we are losing our largest ratepayer in Procter &amp; Gamble. So, as they move to West Virginia, they're moving their beauty care line to West Virginia. It's a very water-intensive manufacturing process, and I'm going to talk about that on the next couple of slides. Their departure is really forcing us to have to look at our water rates. And then, as I mentioned, 50 cent monthly stormwater fee in 2020 is being proposed. I want to talk about, I want to talk more about the departure of Procter &amp; Gamble and the impact on water and sewer, and it's really the tale of two funds, if you will. Our water fund, Procter &amp; Gamble is our largest ratepayer in water. They're about 8% of all revenues in our water fund, and that, they contribute 3/4 of a million dollars, more than 3/4 of a million dollars to our water revenues every year. To put that in perspective, our next highest ratepayer pays 120,000. So, Procter &amp; Gamble is not only the largest, they're the largest by far, and we have to figure out how to absorb that departure. And then, they'll still have a little bit of water in sewer, but as they manufacture toothbrushes, that's not a, that's not a wet industry, right? They're not using water, so we have to, we have to adjust. And unfortunately, our water department has not been operating with large operational surpluses in the last few years. The money that we're taking in, we're putting right back into the system. And so, as we lose that largest ratepayer, we really have two choices. We can raise rates, or we can pull back on our investment in our distribution and our treatment system. So, we're recommending a combination of those two, two 5% rate increases, again fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21. And then, you'll see in the CIP, we pulled back about $300,000 a year in system improvements. And that's really where we need to be to get to a normal rate. And the chart that you see on the screen, you know, it's just important at the end there, you say, you see with these two changes that our revenue lines are slightly above our expenditure lines there. So, we think that these combination of rate increases and the $300,000 reduction in the CIP will get us to a stable point, but it's something that we have to watch closely. On the other hand, sewer or wastewater, it's a different story there. It's not different, P&amp;G is still a major user. They're the second-largest sewer account that we have. They pay us about 1.35 million in sewer dollars per year. Only the University of Iowa is higher, so the University of Iowa largely supplies their own water, but they rely on us for sewer. So, the university is higher in terms of sewer contributions to us, but 1.3 million is still very significant. Again, going down to the next highest sewage, sewer user, you're down to 160,000. So, we're losing another huge ratepayer with sewer, but we're not necessarily needing to increase our rates in sewer, and that's because we've been operating with a very large operational surplus over the last few years. That combined with all the flood recovery money that helped us build our new plant, we can, we can absorb it. And it's not to say that it doesn't hurt the fund. We're not, basically what we're doing is we're cutting down our savings rate for future projects in wastewater, but operationally and through our kind of CIP program, we can continue really at the same pace that we've had and absorb this hit with sewer. So, the fact that there's so much strain on the water, that's where we want to focus, and we don't want to necessarily pile on ratepayers with a sewer increase as well. We'll talk real quick about impacts to households to give you a picture of what an average household might experience with this budget. First, on the property tax side, we just use a home valuation of $100,000. It's easy to follow the math on that. And on the first column, you have the current year budget, fiscal year 19, and then the increase in fiscal year 20. So, taxable valuation. Remember that slide we talked about earlier? The rollback is going up from 56 to 57. So, a higher percentage of your home is now taxable. So, you see that, that 56,918, you're going to pay more, you're going to pay taxes on more of your value in fiscal year 20, but we offset that by dropping the rate. So, the rate goes down, and the net impact to that household is $1. So, you'll pay $1 extra in property taxes to the City of Iowa City, assuming your evaluation stayed same at a $100,000 home. Obviously, if you've got a $300,000 home, you can just multiply that by three. But property taxes aren't the only city expenditures that homeowners will face, and so we combine that with our utility accounts. And what you see here is, I think really what you want to look at is the percent change from year to year. And you can see from fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 20, we're asking households to pay about 1.3% more to the city. And then you can go up and look where that's coming from. So, the first one is property taxes, and you see that $1 increase there. Stormwater, we're asking for $6 more from the average household per year. That's 50 cents a month. No change in the refuse fee, no change in the sewer fee, and that first 5% of the water hits, too. So, it's another $19 per year on your water bill, and that gets you that 1.3% increase. So, we think that's a pretty modest increase and certainly in line with what we've been doing over the last few years. Okay, I'm going to tee up what I think is going to be some points of conversation for you, and Ashley alluded to this. Our fiscal year 18 ended really well, again, because we did not anticipate getting the backfill of that 1.5 million, because we had some loan repayments to the general fund, because of building permit revenues. We're at close to a $3 million surplus, and that's really unallocated and above our policy goal for reserves. So, we're already at essentially 35%, which is the top range of our reserve goals, and the surplus is on top of that. So, here are some points that I think you'll want to talk about as your budget deliberations go on. One, affordable housing. As Ashley mentioned, we're really proud that we have 650,000 now in the budget, embedded in the budget that's going to be there year after year. It's as safe as any other program that we have embedded in our budget. However, I would think that you probably want to consider some additional one-time funds to get that number back up to where it's been in previous years. So, that's something for you to talk about. We can take some of those surplus numbers and move that 650,000 up to a level that you find more acceptable. You just have to know the difference between, you know, what's embedded year after year now versus those one-time funds. You've already made the decision to budget 140,000 more for the South District Homeownership Program. That decision came after this budget was printed, so we didn't have time to put it in here, but we'll take that 140 from the surplus dollars. You have two affordable housing requests that'll come your way in January. One is in an info packet that you've already received in late December. That's a recommendation from HCDC to increase the Lytec support to the Sand Lytec project out on Herbert Hoover. That's a recommendation for an additional $200,000 there. And then you have additional requests coming from the Housing Fellowship for $150,000. Those you could use surplus funds for, or you could use unallocated land banking funds. So, again, as part of our affordable housing strategy, we've been saving dollars for land banking. You could, you could tap into those funds, too, and that's probably where I would go first, but you could, you know, that's for you to decide. The solar at Terry True Blood, that's another decision you made at your last meeting that we just didn't have time to include in this budget, so we'll add $100,000 in for that project. And then, in your information packet that came out on Thursday, you'll see that staff has presented some cost estimates for the moving of the St. Say Gilmore House, which is at, near the Gloria Day Church. Those came in much higher than we anticipated. And while we have $330,000 already in the budget for that move, if you want to move that house, it's going to cost you another 200 to 860 on top of that, depending on the level of renovations that you want to do to that home. So, we'll need to talk through that. Staff is recommending that we replenish the emergency reserve. Again, as Ashley mentioned, we tapped into that to buy some properties around City Park in the flood area last year when we didn't have the state and federal funds available. So, a $450,000 contribution will take us back up to that $5 million mark. And then I want to take a minute to talk to you about the reason that staff is suggesting creating a municipal facility reserve. We've seen it this year with the Streets Building. It took us a decade or more to plan for the replacement of that one Streets Building, and thanks to some surplus dollars in past years, we were able to get over the hump, and that project is now under construction. But as we look around city facilities and we think out five, 10, 15 years, there's a lot of, a lot of needs that are going to come up, frankly, needs that are here now. And we don't have a really, a financial plan for dealing with those. I mean, it will be one of those situations where, in most cases, we would have to go to the voters and ask for a bond referendum. I'd like to start putting some dollars aside to help ease that cost burden on future councils when decisions are made to replace facilities. Some of the facilities that we've identified as either needing construction or replacement or rehab in the next, again, I'm going to say probably 10 years, would be Police Station. We're outgrowing the Police Station that we have. There's really nowhere to expand. You're looking at probably a $20 million project when we look at comparable facilities elsewhere and considering, you know, the time value of money. But certainly now, if we were to go out, I would expect 15 to 20 million, and if it's, you know, five to 10 years from now, we're probably looking closer to 20 million. We've talked about equipment and transit and maybe needing funding, additional funding for the relocation of those buildings. Many of you have been on that Public Works, old Public Works campus. You know the conditions of those buildings, and they're not good. The Senior Center is another one, our Rec Centers, some of these buildings that are really old, they're getting to the point where they need major rehabilitation. So, what we would suggest is that we set aside a good portion of the reserve into a, basically a placeholder spot for future municipal facilities. And again, that way, when these needs come to present day, we have some funding to help that piece of the puzzle, and if we have to go to the voters, it's a smaller ask, or if we have to tap into other revenue sources, it's not as a big of a jump for us when we need to do that. So, we would spend a good portion of the next year trying to plan out and do some financial planning around those facilities, but certainly with the opportunity here that we have with another large surplus, we'd like to see some money set aside for that purpose. A few notes about next year's budget. As I mentioned, it's, it is a reassessment year. We expect next year that we'll be in pretty good shape because we expect some pretty good reassessment numbers there. What's a little bit more uncertain is the last three years, the '22, '23, and '24, those of those property tax reforms. So, it's kind of short-term feel real good, and then that cloud of uncertainty starts to hover back over in a couple of years. Our debt service levy, which is where we've done the lion's share of our tax rate reductions, is normalizing a bit. We think we probably have another one to two years of smaller decreases, so we may be able to get to the 10 years of tax rate decreases before we kind of plateau and hit that sweet spot where hopefully our tax levy then becomes flat for a good period of time. Here's some of the things that we're looking at closely for next year's budget. We talked about water and sewer. We also have some concerns with landfill and refuse, so we'll just need to watch those enterprise funds pretty closely. Obviously, your top priority is your strategic plan and some of the master plans that you've adopted. Ashley mentioned population growth and continued demand on our operation services, whether it's calls for service from public safety or utility accounts. Our core services need some additional operational support, so that'll be a focus next year, too. The transit fund we've talked about, we know that there's going to be a lot of interest in the community in bolstering our transit service, and we're going to spend a lot of time next year making sure that we have the resources to make that happen, should the council want to go there. The wage increases, that's something that we obviously are going to need some more direction from you on, but as we do our compression analysis, we'll come back to you. And if, you know, you're going to have to decide if that's a $300,000 or $400,000 expense that you want to make as we continue to look at stepping that up to $15 an hour. We talked about municipal facility needs and also the roadway needs. So, those are the, kind of the top next year's budget items. I want to offer some final thoughts, maybe end on a positive note here as we get into our deliberations. And I thought about kind of the last three years and what we've been able to accomplish, really what you've been able to accomplish as a city council. We've significantly expanded affordable housing efforts. It's now to the point where we're not even using one-time funds, it's actually embedded in our budget. That's a huge accomplishment for the city council. Being able to contribute 2.5 million for the Behavioral Access Center without taking on any new debt, that's fantastic, and we're a major player in making that happen. We've created new grant funds to advance important issues to the community, whether that's social justice and racial equity, historic preservation, climate action. So, we're actually setting sides of fund to engage the community to move those issues forward as opposed to just us moving those forward as well. We've really bolstered our roadway maintenance plan. We may have been a little too aggressive and may have to step that back, but you have heard the calls from the public and you've increased the dollars there. All the, all the master plans we've talked about, we're on, we're on schedule with the bike plan, we're on schedule with the parks plan. We're continuing to check off even older plans like the Downtown Streetscape Plan with the Ped Mall Project that you approved, Riverfront Crossings Plan. I mean, all these things are advancing because you've been able to set aside resources to them. You've expanded some staff in key service areas, which we haven't been able to do. You've expanded services. You've expanded services. I mean, it's not a small thing to initiate curbside composting or the bookmobile project. Those take operational resources and support, and you've given us those. And then the investments that you've made back in city facilities, while we have, I talked about kind of the need going forward, you've put a lot of money into city facilities. The Streets Building, obviously, being the biggest, but we've invested a lot at Mercer, at Robert A. Lee, even in this building, you know, we've invested a lot, and that means a lot to the staff and to the public that use those facilities. So very proud of what you've been able to do with your budgets there. And at the same time, you're not, you're not increasing the tax rate. You haven't had to look to alternative revenue sources to fund those. So you've done those all within the financial parameters that we have. You've maintained that AAA bond rating, you've brought down the tax rate. It's pretty impressive to step back and look at, look at that over these last three years. Hopefully, you'll find that this budget continues that tradition. We expect that you'll want to make some changes here and there, and you should feel comfortable having those conversations and making changes where you think you need to, but hopefully we've given you a good start here. So with that, we're done. We can entertain discussion on the presentation now, or we can jump into some of the department, specific department overviews.